You've got to pull it up first. Okay, and then just click when I say go. I'd like to start by thanking those who participated in our monthly discussions and deliberations on the issues that could potentially impact our schools throughout the county. CIP members Mary Beth Geena, who's standing next to me, who's going to be flipping through our presentation here, and Jen Bowles, who's right behind us. Our facilitators Scott Haran and Jennifer Spindel, and our newest member, Mr. Dwayne McOscar. Before I move on, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, who after much discussion and tenuous debate, saw the value in supporting a complete rebuild of Stafford High School, and on several occasions used CIP research and site visit reports to guide and support their decision to invest county revenues in this important project. It's nice to know that our work on this volunteer committee is recognized and considered when making these important decisions. And a quick congratulations to you all, and to Scott Haran and his team for doing an outstanding job on bringing Falmouth Elementary School up to the standards that our community deserves. Overall logistics and everything else associated with that project were well implemented and very well done, and we would like to thank you all for your continued support of ensuring that these capital improvements are completed for our children. No favoritism here, but let's hope Staffordella goes as smoothly as Falmouth did. Our report is going to be somewhat multifaceted this year. We have been straddled with numerous legislative and policy hurdles relating to doing complete in-depth research on the UDA issue. So we've decided to include in our report updates on the UDA, updates on the policy and budget environment, and insight into the proffer process and various recommendations that ultimately affect or touch your CIP. As relates to the urban development area issue, as you know, last year the General Assembly passed urban development legislation that mandated areas in the county to grow dense, multifaceted areas that would accommodate most of the county's growth in an attempt to keep sprawl under control, to also ease pressure on the public services such as water and sewer, infrastructure, and public safety. This committee voted to look deeper into the county's plan relative to UDAs and its impact on schools in or around those areas, and we began our dissection of the county's comprehensive plan. As January approached and the General Assembly convened, we'd heard some rumblings that the UDA mandate would possibly change to allow it to be altered at the pleasure of the local governing bodies, to essentially make it optional. As of this past May, the legislation was passed and the UDA became the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to decide on. They are now charged with deciding whether to continue to work with what they've got, reduce the amount of the UDAs down to seven or eight or something more manageable, or to do away with them altogether. As of June's board meeting, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution kicking the UDA back to the Planning Commission for them to discuss further and figure out how to proceed. Why are we bringing this to you today? Initially, we saw the potential for a severe impact on our school facilities around at least the first two UDAs. As our schools are already at or close to capacity, the projections for dwelling unit numbers for both those areas would have had the potential for devastating effects to the SES, SMS, and possibly Brookpoint High School ADM numbers. Neither one of these UDA areas calls for new school infrastructure, not through UDA proffers or mandates, nor is there any mention of adding school infrastructure in these areas in the county's comp plan as relates to developing or redeveloping these specific areas. If you look at the PowerPoint slide, you'll see what the initial UDA plan called for as far as dwelling units and proposed school infrastructure. I think it's out of order.
I think so.
That's okay. Regardless of what happens with the Planning Commission and how they handle the UDA issue, Courthouse and Brook continue to serve as ground zero for continued growth. Not only is there potential for capacity difficulties as relates to UDA development, there is also RDA, which is the redevelopment of existing infrastructure, and the Transfer of Development Rights Program that could present an impact. The TDR program would essentially take the residential development that was slated for the Brook area and place it in a concentrated, higher-density area at Courthouse. This would potentially place more students in the SES, SMS, and possibly even Brookpoint and Drew attendance zones, with no contribution of proffers of any kind for the affected school zones. Yep, that's it. The Courthouse and Brook TDR exchange are being deemed a test case, and if successful, will be utilized throughout the county, essentially affecting the density of other areas ultimately impacting capacity at many of our existing at-capacity schools. Additionally, BRAC and other influxes into our county continues to bring new residents, which allows the county to continue to grow, grows revenue streams, and it also expands the need for school expansion. While these are all good and positive things, this is a flip side, there is a flip side to that coin. When Congress's deficit supercommittee failed to reform tax entitlement programs last year, a previously passed law kicked in that calls for sequestration. I'm going to make it really simple because it's a very complicated law, and it forces cutting of budgets across the board, starting with the Department of Defense. These cuts are slated for January. Cuts in military, civilian personnel, cuts in federal contracting. Notifications must be made by the impacted companies, contractors, or employers to those affected within 90 days before the layoffs. That could create a huge problem. If agreement in Congress is not met, we could see many in our community receiving pink slips by the start of our school year. On a larger scale, $500 billion in budget cuts have the potential of significant impacts to locality situated around military bases across the country, and in our case, we're host to businesses and families associated with Quantico, Fort Belvoir, and the other bases that are around our county. A recent report by George Mason University suggests that this could pull $10.5 billion out of Virginia's economy, slashing growth and eliminating more than 122,000 jobs from local economies, with another $32,000 Virginia-based position slashed just from DoD itself. An exodus from Stafford County based on this sequestration would result in a loss of tax revenue from families, businesses, et cetera, and would have a significant impact on our county budget as well as the school's budget, and it has the real potential of impacting capital improvements projects already on your drawing board. All doomsday scenarios aside, existing capacity and future planning for capacity remains a very big challenge for the school system. With limited funds to bank, valuable and usable land close to where many of these behemoth developments are popping up, and proffer competition among other county needs, we feel that more discussion and planning needs to be conducted. The system as it stands now has staff on both sides of Route 1 communicating on proffer needs. We feel that the most effective and inclusive proffer discussions needs to start at the school board and the Board of Supervisors level. We hope to see at some point a subcommittee similar to the fairly new Schools Committee, also known as the Three on Three, established to possibly include the schools, Parks and Rec, and other county division stakeholders to address countywide proffer needs before any decisions are made on rezoning or development approvals. This would enable you to have a seat at the table during the planning process and to ensure the school needs are heard by the Board of Supervisors firsthand at the beginning of any process. While proffers are considered voluntary, the county has recently proposed a mandatory transportation impact fee on all development in the county. The proposal calls for a $5,000 fee on every residential lot located or developed in this county after the 31st of this month. While we appreciate that developers should pay their fair share of our county's growth, we are concerned that this will affect the voluntary proffers that would otherwise be given for schools, fire and rescue, and other services. As far as the development community sees it, that $5,000 per lot for that transportation impact fee is the proffer. We wanted you to know about that conundrum because that could take money out of your pockets. I'm getting ahead of myself. Many of our neighboring jurisdictions have benefited from cash proffers to help pay for their schools. Most notably Prince William County, the latest summary of surveys of cash proffers from the Local Government Committee in the General Assembly reports that the 2010-2011 budget year, Prince William County received $6 million in proffered cash, with the schools receiving at least half of those dollars. Coming in second was Fairfax County with an overall proffer revenue of $4.1 million, with the schools receiving almost half, for a total of $2.1 million. For that same fiscal year, Stafford County received $467,000 in total profit revenue, proffer revenue, with only 112,000 going to the schools. I've included those slides, these slides here in your package as well, because you can see them a little closer. The 2010-2011 slide shows that Stafford County, shows that Stafford County Public Schools did receive the largest piece of the smallest pie in at least a decade. While we understand that Prince William County is much larger than Stafford, it shows that the county recognizes the importance of ensuring adequate educational facilities by providing at least half of the proffer revenue it brings in to the school system. Taking into consideration the current school infrastructure capacity, the limited budget dollars, the limited, albeit competitive, proffer revenues, limited usable land, and the possibility of all, eight, or some form of UDA development, the schools will need to reevaluate their readiness to accommodate new schools or expand existing facilities. It is our recommendation to the school board to begin positioning the school division as a planning partner with the board across the street, in order to meet the needs of the existing and incoming families and providing a quality education with ample infrastructure with a roadmap on how to get there. In summary, the CIP Advisory Committee would like to offer the following recommendations to the Stafford County Public Schools. Immediate establishment of a proffers committee to be comprised of supervisors, school board members, Parks and Rec folks, and with insistence from, or that these proffer discussions remain inclusive of all the community entities affected by these decisions. Establish a legislative affairs function that follows all county, that's Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission's state and federal actions that affect the Stafford County Public Schools budget, CIP, and any capacity issues. Engage this legislative affairs function in all aspects of UDA, RDA, and TDR planning going forward. And based on the UDA decision by the Board of Supervisors, we recommend the establishment of a realignment committee of parents, school, and county staff to begin looking at various scenarios of realigning students for the purpose of balancing student ADM. In closing, I want to say that this was a very difficult year to do substantive research and reporting on the issue of UDAs, given the liquid nature of the local and state government's desire to either keep the policy or to kill it. We were essentially on hold waiting for decisions to be made. While this is still a real possibility, we hope that next year's CIP committee will continue to keep this on their radar screens. This has the potential of really putting a lot of pressure on the schools, on our staff, and our resources, so I would suggest that they do it. Lastly, I wanted to let you know that the current membership of this CIP Advisory Committee will not be returning for the upcoming school year in order to focus on family and other priorities. I say this now because I want to take advantage of the opportunity to publicly encourage folks that are in the audience or those watching this at home to please sign up and join this committee. Go to your board members and submit an application. And finally, I want to express my deepest appreciation to all the staff that's helped us with our request for information. We've probably added to your already full load here at Central Office. It's been a pleasure serving on this committee for the last four years and working with you all, and I thank you very much. And if you have any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to.
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one minute.
Just saying thank you for your time, because I know it was a difficult year, just trying to nail things down.
Indeed. Thank you. I'll do that. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that I really want to say how much I appreciate the efforts of that committee. I was never the liaison, but I participated in a number of those committee meetings, and you all gave that, your efforts, a lot of energy. You're all balancing family, a lot of other commitments, your work schedules, and I just think that there's a huge appreciation that our board needs to say for all your efforts of what you've done over the years. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. We have a Finance and Budget Advisory Committee report, which will be in written form, and it will be submitted at a future date. 9.03, the Gifted Advisory Committee Year End Report.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Bridges. I am Melanie Daniel, and I've had the distinct pleasure of working with the Gifted Advisory Committee this year. This is a very passionate and determined group of parents and supporters of gifted education, and we have enjoyed putting Mr. McOscar on the fast track for learning, and so he's had a lot of fun with that. Where's my up? I love that. I'm going to introduce to you Pamela De Toledo. Pamela is, has served with us as our chair for, oh, three years? And I know that you've probably talked with her, or she's talked to you, at some points, and you know just how important everything is to her about Stafford County and education, and we have really benefited from her leadership. And joining her will be Barbara Martin, appear to just tell you a little bit about what this committee has talked about, and as a result of it, what they would like to recommend that you consider in supporting us with gifted education. So Pamela.
My name is Pamela De Toledo, and I'm the Chair of the Gifted Advisory Committee. And I hope you'll indulge. I'd like just to take a minute and thank all of the members of the Gifted Advisory Committee. Are there any members in the audience, if you could please stand for a minute, please? I'd like to thank the parents who took their valuable family time to come to our meetings. I'd like to thank our focus teachers, who again took their personal time, whose insights were invaluable to us. I'd like to thank our student representatives, who found time in their busy governor's school and IB schedules to join us. I'd like to thank Melanie Daniel, our facilitator, who's an outstanding advocate for gifted education in this county. And I'd like to thank our school board rep, Dwayne McOscar, who joined us halfway through the school year and really jumped in headfirst into the Gifted Advisory Committee, and we really appreciate it. All right, on with the presentation. The Gifted Advisory Committee has worked very hard this year to develop cost-effective recommendations for your consideration. We understand that the economic situation is bad and that the budget, you know, budgets are tight, but this situation also presents opportunities to get creative and to approach things in a different light. All right, we're ready. Stafford County Public Schools stated mission is to challenge every student to achieve excellence. But with the introduction of the SOLs and the No Child Left Behind Act about a decade ago, the mission has shifted to ensure that every student passes the SOLs and that schools make AYP. I think we can all agree that the No Child Left Behind Act had its good points and its bad, and unfortunately, gifted education's kind of collateral damage in the No Child Left Behind Act. With the AYP becoming the primary mission of all the schools, gifted education lost its focus, I think, in our schools, and it's time to put that back on track. I think that the Commonwealth DOE is coming out with new regulations tying teacher evaluations to the student's performance on standardized tests. Because of these pressures and the issues of federal funding, the needs of gifted students are taking a backseat. Our priorities are misplaced. We are turning our children into test takers and fact regurgitators, rather than learners and creative thinkers. In this technological age, we need innovation and creativity to keep this country ahead of the game in a global economy, but instead, we're falling further and further behind. Yeah, another one. One more. In high school, we have some advanced-level classes that require higher levels of thinking, such as IB, CGS, and the APPX programs. But teachers of these classes report that the middle schoolers coming up are not well-prepared for these classes. Furthermore, because of tight budgets, more and more of these upper-level classes are being cut because the classes are not always full. We still do not have enough focus teachers. I think we, one more. We still do not have enough focus teachers in our schools. In virtually every high school, the focus teachers used for teaching regular classes. This, in essence, is taking away from the focus program for both funds and resources. Essentially, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and in the meantime, Peter is becoming destitute. At the elementary level, our focus teachers are stretched to the max, and most elementary students receive 90 minutes or less of focus time per week. Mostly less than 90 minutes. It's usually about an hour to 45 minutes a week. A week! And that's the extent of their focus services. In the middle school, focus students can go for weeks without receiving any focus services at all, since the middle school focus teachers must handle hundreds of students. The focus students at middle school receive a few hours about once every quarter. The results are clear and can be verified by any parent of a focused child. The children are bored in class, they quickly learn that they don't have to work hard to get good grades, and never learn how to study because they don't need to. But worst of all, they become underachievers, which is about the worst thing that can happen to a gifted child. These gifted students are leaders of tomorrow. We need well-educated leaders, great minds, and innovative thinkers to keep our country competitive. We need to make this our highest priority. Differentiation has been offered up as a potential solution, but most teachers agree that differentiation primarily benefits the slower learners. Gifted students are often given worksheets and other busy work to keep them occupied while the teacher focuses on slower learners. We need to change some things in the way we handle gifted education, and we really can't put it off any longer. I understand you're currently discussing how to handle new DOE regulations tying teacher performance to student achievement. I hope you don't follow Spotsylvania County, and please do not use test scores as an assessment of teacher performance. There's so many factors that go into student test scores that are well beyond a teacher's control. This criterion is not good for the teachers, it's not good for students, and it's especially harmful to gifted education. We need to come up with better measures of teacher performance that make many more, that take many more factors into account. A good teacher is greater than the sum of his or her test scores. And I bet all of you remember that one teacher, when you were growing up, that inspired you, and you still remember that teacher. I bet you don't remember the grade you got in the class, but it's those measures that are what, that are what important, and there's no way of quantifying those types of things. For gifted education, we can implement a few low-cost measures that will greatly enhance the educational services provided to these students. For elementary students, we need to cluster-group the focus students in a meaningful way into as few classes as possible. Yeah, we should be on there. One more. And these students need an extended and accelerated curriculum so that they are not bored, that they can learn at a pace appropriate for them, and so that they are challenged. It is essential for this to occur at the elementary level before underachievement habits set in. And they set in quickly. In middle school, we need honors classes in the core subjects. We currently have advanced math classes, and some schools have advanced language arts and/or science for eighth graders. We need to expand these classes to incorporate more subjects, and at all three grade levels. For this coming year, we would like to open a dialogue with several interested middle school principals. We're not asking for change overnight, we understand that that's not feasible. We'd just like to begin the dialogue with some of the principals. All teachers need to take the Stafford County Public, we're on the next slide. All teachers need to take the Stafford County Public Schools professional development courses in teaching gifted students. This needs to be incorporated as part of their teaching recertification cycle. This is really a no-brainer. It benefits the teachers, and it benefits the students. It doesn't cost anything, and it's very, very important that we implement this. At the high school level, we need to restore the focus teachers to their job as full-time focus resource teachers. High school students in particular need the guidance and assistance of focus teachers as they prepare for the rigors of advanced high school classes and as they prepare for college and independent life. High school focus teachers are essential in providing these students with curriculum guidance, enrichment opportunities, college preparation guidance, and scholarship opportunities, as well as a myriad other things. And most importantly, we need a focus teacher in every school. We only need 3.5 more teachers. We certainly appreciate the teacher you gave us last year for the 11, 12 school year. We only need three and a half more. It makes such a huge difference in these students' lives, having a full-time focus teacher. And I think if you saw a focus class and you saw the eagerness and excitement with which these children go to their focus classes, you wouldn't hesitate to authorize this in the next budget round that you're going to go through shortly. Next slide. I think we're two slides now. The payoff for these small changes will be huge for Stafford County. The Gifted Advisory Committee is certain that you will see a rise in test scores, both on SOLs and national tests such as SATs and APs. We will have bright, eager, and creative learners who'll come back after college and add to the economic vitality of our community. We're hoping, we are asking, we are requesting that the school board makes gifted education a priority for the 2012-13 school year. The Gifted Advisory Committee would like to thank each and every one of the school board members for your unflagging dedication, compassion, and consideration of our children. The parents of Stafford County appreciate all the wonderful work that you do for our children. Thank you. Any questions?
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, to all of our advisory committees, your reports are a necessary thing every year, and we appreciate very, very much your willingness to put the kind of work in that you do put in every single year, and especially to the long-timers. Thank you for your dedication. We're moving on to 10.01. It is a public hearing on the proposed sale of portions of the property on the Moncuria Elementary School campus. Citizen comments are three minutes to speakers, and the speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments, which for right now is the public hearing. Chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I do not have anyone listed for the public hearing. Is there anyone on the floor who would like to address the board with concern to the proposed sale of portions of the property on the Moncuria Elementary School campus? The public hearing is over with no comment. Moving on to other matters, citizen comment, same rules as I just stated. I do have some folks that are listed. We will begin with Mr. Jason Pelt.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Dr. Bridges. My name is Jason Pelt. I represent the Tice family, and Aaron Tice seated right here in the front portion of the row here. I'm also a partner at the law firm of Goodall, Pelton, Carper, located at 1259 Courthouse Road, and I'm also, just happen to be, a citizen of Stafford County, and I reside in the Acquahia District. I'll keep my comments very brief. As most of you are sitting at home, maybe watching TV, you can't help but notice that the Olympics are about to start, and I and my family are very excited about that. That's why I'm pleased to be representing the Tice family, because Aaron is quite certainly going to be in the Olympic trials of 2016 for swimming. He is an accomplished swimmer. He's also going to be entering the Brookpoint High School, or entering the ninth grade. In looking towards entering the ninth grade and working with Brookpoint High School, the Tice family realized that his commitment to swimming would not be able to coincide with a full school year or a full educational commitment. So, they started working with Brookpoint High School, specifically the Scott McClellan, who was then the Assistant Principal, now Principal, and Director of Counseling, Dr. Marlena Bridges, and trying to figure out what can we do. After talking to them, they decided to become a home educational, a home instructional family. In the home instructional family, and there are some options that the school allows a student to student to participate in some classes, specifically the provision that the Tice family was relying on is 2110, and it says for all grade levels, a maximum of two courses will be taken per academic year, or per semester by the home instruction child. The proposed change is to change that from per semester to academic year. Brookpoint, as you know, is on the block schedule, which would allow a student like Aaron Tice to take four classes that year. This change, per semester to per academic year, would only allow him to take two classes per academic year. Now certainly, the Tice family is going to have to supplement because they are a home educational, a home instructional family, but this allows him some access to not only the educational benefits of Stafford County High School, but also the social benefits of being in a classroom setting. Certainly, he will get all of his instruction that he needs through the physical education through his swimming program, and he swims at Freedom Aquatic Center and is coached by Mr. Jeremy Lynn. However, on behalf of the Tice family, I would ask the board not to adopt these proposed changes. Allow families like the Tice family, a family who elects home instruction, to be allowed to take
One minute.
Two classes per semester and not two classes per academic year. I wrote Mr. Darrell Nelson a letter which sums up my remarks. I also forwarded that letter to all the board member. I think all the board members possibly got it. I will submit that same letter to the deputy clerk for submission of the record. I'll also open myself up to any questions that any board members might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next citizen comment is R.C. Stevens? Is it Stevens?
How are y'all doing tonight? My name is R.C. Stevens. I've lived in Stafford County for 47 years. I'm a graduate of Stafford High School, 1983. Gotten a little enlightenment on tonight on all this UDA stuff, so I'm not really going to go into that speech myself. I do not think the rebuild of Stafford High School is a viable option for this county. As a taxpayer of this county, to me, it seems like we're wasting money, where we could better look forward to the future if these people are correct. With the amount of building that's going to go on in the near, very near future, we're going to need another high school in this county to take care of that position. That's all I'm going to say about that. Second of all, looking at your proposal site, your campus site, we're putting a roundabout, a five-star roundabout in the campus to exit and enter the school? As a person that goes to the Spotsylvania Town Center, it's only a three-spoke entrance and exit, and the people can't navigate that. We're going to take high school kids that got a license for a year, maybe two years, and put them in a five-spoke roundabout to get in and out of the school? Don't really think that's a real good idea. I think we need to readdress that. Next concern I had is driving up to the school, driving up here today, I stopped by the school. At the end of this past school year, we built two new sheds. We built one at the football stadium, we built one at the field hockey and baseball stadium. Along with the ones at the baseball and field hockey stadium, there's already a brick building there that was there in 1983 when I went to school there. Now there's a blue building that the baseball team uses to store some of their stuff. Then we stick a third white building right out there with it. So we're going to spend $68 million roughly
One minute.
On the new school, and we're going to drive up, and we have three sheds on one side. You're going to have a practice field and tennis courts on the other. How many more sheds are we going to put out on this property? In the tearing down of this property, you're going to lose two sheds. What are we going to do about the children being bused from football practice, soccer practice, field hockey practice, and whatnot else? How are these kids going to get any time with after-school education? If they need a tutor, how are they going to get any tutor in time? All the athletics at Stafford High School, outdoor athletics, are going to lose approximately an hour a day on practice time. Five hours a week or more, hoping that the traffic is good on Route 17, getting the football team to Gary Meltzer's, or Dixon Smith, or wherever the other teams are going.
Time.
Thank you.
Barbara Warren.
Good evening, and thank you for all your hard work, especially to Mrs. Kidby. I know we inundated you the past couple of months from Hampton Oaks Elementary School as parents, because we have seen changes and we are here to present them to you. I am a parent of three. I have been at Hampton Oaks for nine years. My children are spaced three to four years apart, so I have been continuously there. So I have personally seen the changes. And I first want to tell you, though, that Hampton Oaks community, who are we? We are a community, as I know you presented in our, your closed session. Our families are usually military or government. We chose not to live close to DC. Our husbands are, the spouses chose to drive to work because we wanted to live in a community where we get good education. Our children have opportunities. There's a lot of things to keep them busy so that they could stay on track to become good citizens when they grow older. We used to brag about how good Hampton Oaks was, and, you know, maybe we got spoiled because we had so many programs for our children to succeed in, and things changed. Currently, we don't have any parents to volunteer. It's the same people. It's probably because of the economy, a lot of people had to go back to work, but we rezoned. We lost all of our friends from Austin Ridge to go to Anthony Burns, and so now it's just a small percentage of Hampton Oaks parents. There's a lot of other communities. I want to make clear that we are not prejudiced at any point. We all come from different states, from different backgrounds. You talk about our, we were talking about our ESL students. We love our ESL students, but there are challenges. Not only our ESL students, but there's other students who come with bringing needs. I'm a nurse educator, I speak to people with diabetes, and we use Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. You can't expect someone to care for themselves if they don't have money to take for medicine, if they're not educated enough to read instructions that you give them, if they have social problems, if they don't have support. Same with our students, and we see a lot of them in our classrooms nowadays. You know, if they don't have
One minute.
You know, if they don't have food, if they don't have family support, they're not going to want to get As, but our students want to do well. But there's so many challenges because there's so many disciplinary problems with the students. And we have, I have lost five to six neighbors who pulled their students out of Hampton Oaks to go to private schools because they want to seek the quality education that they want. So I'm just, I'm, thank you for receiving our notes, and, you know, I'm glad that you're going to listen to other Hampton Oaks families to, so you could get a qualitative view of what's happening at our school. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Alana Lynch, and this is my husband, Mark, and we live in the Hampton Oaks neighborhood. I'm going to read a letter that I just wrote to Miss Kidby yesterday, and I'm not sure if all of you have had a chance to read it. As I mentioned, we moved to Stafford, Virginia in December of 2009. We are attracted to Hampton Oaks because of its community appeal and proximity to the elementary school. Our daughters enrolled in Stafford County as second and fifth graders. They are currently rising fifth and eighth graders. I have served on the PTO board for the past two years. I volunteer in my daughter's classrooms, lead book clubs, chaperone field trips, and volunteer to assist where I'm needed. I have viewed firsthand the demographics at Hampton Oaks Elementary make it unique and overwhelming. As statistical data indicates, Hampton Oaks has one of the highest percentages of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. We're hovering right around 50% in the county. Our ESL population consists of more than 200 students. Every child deserves a quality education, and at present, the learning environment for all students is being compromised. Teachers are spending the majority of their instructional time dealing with complex discipline issues. The students who require services, whether it be IEPs, ESL, counseling, special ed, reading, math intervention, et cetera, are too numerous to have their needs adequately met. As a result, all students are failing to receive the quality education that they deserve. Teaching in this type of environment is stressful, to say the least. Many quality teachers have elected to leave Hampton Oaks and others, and go to other schools within the county. Some have left the county altogether. I believe at least 10 new teachers, including specialists, will join Hampton Oaks in the fall. Families have had to make difficult educational decisions for their children. Some have been able to waver out of Hampton Oaks, others have selected the private school route, and some are homeschooling. We are thankful that our youngest daughter has one more year
One minute.
In elementary school, or we would actively seek an alternative situation for her. It is heartbreaking and has affected our entire community. It is my fear that if Hampton Oaks continually fails to meet AYP standards, it will become a school of choice. A mass exit of Hampton Oaks students should be anticipated if this happens. Sadly, the majority of positions on the PTO board are held by members in the Hampton Oaks community. Volunteers will be even more difficult to find. We're going to be experiencing some growth here very soon, and we really feel like redistricting needs to be addressed. It's confusing to me why we're driving by neighboring schools to get to Hampton Oaks. Mrs. Groover and the Hampton Oaks staff work very hard, and they try to make the best out of a difficult situation. And some of the challenges that Hampton Oaks has can and should be addressed. As parents, we want our children to feel safe, confident, and prepared for a productive future.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, would you like to submit that letter to the clerk so it can be copied to all? Thank you.
Amy Kent.
My name is Amy Kent. I am a Stafford County resident. I'm an Army wife, and I have three children who attend Stafford County schools, and we live in Hampton Oaks, and I have been the PTO president at Hampton Oaks for the past two years. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight because we're actually getting ready to move out of Stafford County, but I feel so passionately about this, and when I heard that this was going to be a topic, I had to come because Hampton Oaks is a wonderful, wonderful school, and it relies tremendously on its parent volunteers to work in the library and in the classrooms, and in book groups, and on the PTO. And the parents who are volunteering are parents who really care about the environment in which their children are receiving an education, and a lot of them you'll hear from and you've had letters from. These parents know what's going on in the classroom firsthand. They are seeing what our children are, are, the environment is, and a lot of our children are mainstream, average students who would really benefit from extra time with a teacher, some little enrichment with a teacher, but unfortunately, given the numbers of the classroom situation, that's not possible for teachers to give those, those kids that extra time. We talked about the percentage of ESL children that are in the classroom, but we also haven't taken into consideration the amount of disadvantaged children that are also in the classroom. The free and reduced lunch percentage is 50%, and when you consider that 50% of every single classroom has children who, who need, have, also have special needs and have things that need to be addressed, our children are the ones that are kind of falling by the wayside and not getting the attention and the education experience that they deserve. I kind of feel like the odds have been stacked against Hampton Oaks that was redistricted five years ago, and I wasn't here then, and I won't be here to see what happens of all this conversation, but it's one of the hardest working staff I've ever seen, and I always, well, I just have to say, I wonder why we haven't looked at redistricting. There are four schools within a four-mile or three, four-mile radius that have numbers that are nowhere near the percentage that Hampton Oaks has. I'm not sure why that hasn't come up more. There's, there is a lack of resources, and I understand that, but it seems to me that you need to maybe think of reallocating the students and where they're going also, and think hard at that, too, because Hampton Oaks is a wonderful environment, but it's going to have some repercussions if it's not addressed soon. So, thank you very much.
Russell Belt.
Hello, my name's Russell Belt. I live in Hampton Oaks. I have two kids that go there, and I'm a Marine. I'd like to thank you all for your hard work, and I appreciate you letting us sit in on the session earlier. I'd just like to highlight one of the points that was brought up by Miss Kidby early on, but then it was kind of lost in discussions, and that was, she highlighted early on that the, the challenges facing Hampton Oaks stem from the 2007 boundary redistricting. And I'd like to recommend that before resources are thrown at the symptoms that, that we're seeing now, that the board consider that if they truly understand the nature of the problem that they're facing. I believe the problem and the solution were mentioned throughout the work, working session. The term "community" was used throughout the session, as it was evident the board understands the importance between the school and the community relationship. The problem and the challenge facing Hampton Oaks is an artificial community created from the, the 2007 boundary change. The strong community witnessed at the Hampton Oaks events that, that were mentioned is often representative of just the local community, not necessarily the school-created community resulting from the boundary change. As mentioned earlier, it's a very small cadre, but they're very hardworking and they're very involved, but that's all you see. It's, it's not representative of the entire school population. And a school cannot succeed without complete community support. As a school board looks to find ways to focus its limited resources in the future, I believe the school board should take a holistic view of the problem instead of chasing a desired ESL teacher-to-student ratio. Building schools around communities may help consolidate resources when they are, where they're needed most. I say we let the communities tell us where they're needed most as opposed to chasing the ratio around, around the map. Adult education programs make a lot more sense if they're based in a community where the need is, if there's already an existing child, teacher, parent, school relationship that you're just reinforcing with an adult education program, as opposed to trying to create it and everybody travel to it. Chances are, it's already in a general area. Reinforce that
One minute.
As opposed to creating something new. Again, the challenge facing Hampton Oaks is an artificiality stemming from the 2007 boundary change. Before chasing symptoms, please consider rezoning schools to contiguous communities. This will show that, this will show you where the, the, the problems, this will show you where the greatest need is and where you can commit those limited resources that you have at your disposal. Thank you.
Anyone who has spoken tonight, if you would like to submit your comments, it is, it's then filed for the record, and so if you have a copy and you would like to submit it, that would be great. Dana Brown.
I hope you won't time me here till I, I set up. I'm Dana Brown, I live in the Rock Hill District, and I'm here tonight to ask you not to change your cell phone policy. I have many concerns about my child's privacy rights being violated when she is in your care, and I'm sure you remember my school board bathroom photo and videos from the last meeting, they had quite an impact. I do not allow my child to have a cell phone at this time, and I don't want you giving her access to one at school. Another child could easily share. I have checked with the Virginia Department of Education, and they say that you can set your own policy, but they do have guidelines for cell phone use, and I have provided a copy for you. Their guidelines state, "A high school student may possess such a portable communication device on school property during the school day. However, the device must be out of sight, turned off, and used only with authorization from the principal." I have researched all the cell phone policies for all the counties in Virginia. There's about 95. I think I left Fredericksburg off, I missed that one. I'm still waiting on responses from six. Five have indicated they will allow cell phone use under special circumstances with permission from the principal or administration, and the rest do not allow to use cell phones during the entire school day. A couple interesting ones worth noting. Bedford County has a pilot program called Bell to Bell. They instituted it last year. That's where they were allowing limited cell phone usage. As of yet, the program is not being expanded. Charlotte County, so I guess it didn't go very good. Charlotte County fines and suspends the students. First violation, they get a warning, second one, they're fined 10 bucks, third one, they're fined 20, and thereafter, it's a $50 fine, plus suspension. Third one, they're fined twenty, and thereafter, it's a fifty-dollar fine, plus suspension. Many schools let them be stored in lockers, you know, out of sight, but they also require a signed form from the parent. An interesting was Loudoun County. I spoke to their division council today. I know someone had presented Loudoun's policy to you a few months ago, and they didn't quite portray it accurately, just to let you know. Last meeting, Mr. Nelson said our violations are going down. We had twelve hundred, down to one thousand. That's a very small percentage of our student population. Doesn't seem we have a huge problem. Our policy is a very good deterrent for kids pulling out their phones. Yes, they can videotape you when you're not looking, but if they're walking around with the cellphone out, someone's going to see them. I don't think we need to be pioneers on cellphone use. Let's sit back and let the other districts work out the trial and error and the legal challenges. We need to enforce our rules on the books. If administrators say it's too much trouble, we need to find some new administrators. You don't change laws because enforcement officials are too lazy to enforce it. And then a quick disclaimer on the little graph I did for you of all the counties. My oldest daughter does not agree with my opinion, and I asked her to print these for you, and when I went to get in the car, I noticed that a lot of the data had been changed and manipulated, where nothing matched up again. So I had to go ahead and fix all that, so I think I've got it all fixed correctly, but her opinion is, is she doesn't think it's any of the principal's or teacher's business what she does with her cellphone at school. So, but thank you very much. I hope you'll consider that.
If there's- that is all I have signed up for, public or citizen comment. If there is any other person in the chambers who would like to come forward and have comment, please come forward at this time. Please state your name.
My name is Sydney Ostrom, and I go to Dixon Smith. I'm going into eighth grade, and I just wanted to talk about girls lacrosse in high school. The Stafford girls teams have gone up like- they've gone up, so now there's over a hundred girls in the Stafford lacrosse program. This year, this spring season, my team, the G seven-eight B team, we were- we went all the way to the championships for the NVYLL, and that's the Northern Virginia Youth Lacrosse. And we- that- it was twenty-eight teams, wait, twenty-six teams, sorry, that we all had games, and we had- we didn't lose one game the whole season. And we went to- when we went to the championships, we lost by one point, and it was disappointing, but we went really far and we were really proud. And we had really good coaches and stuff, but also some, like, one of my coaches, he tries to get them into, like, he has things during elementary school- elementary school PE time, he will bring out lacrosse sticks and put them in their hands and show them some, like, throwing, teach them how to throw and catch, just the basics, and try to get them into it. And he- he does all the- his name's Paul Everett, and he's been in it for a very long time, trying to get it everywhere he can, and he's been one of the reasons that we grew a lot. And-
One minute.
And I just hope that we can get it in high schools because it's a great sport that a lot of girls want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak?
My name is Jaclyn Bianca. I'm a Marine wife. We came to- this is our second time living here in Stafford County. North Hampton Oaks did have a good reputation. It has changed the past years, and if this problem is stemming from the redistricting, I have to look at the school board and realize what- what resources have you failed to precede this problem in the future? If you knew the demographics were going to be so drastically, why wasn't there resources placed ahead of time when you looked at AYP scores and realized that the failure of the school making AYP for three years in a row wasn't an indicator? And jump, as a Marine wife, you try to step ahead of the problem before the problem gets too big, and you want to go ahead. Now you're backpedaling, and you're wasting time, where our children are facing the dilemmas that we have. If you look at the demographics in my son's kindergarten class, three children lived in our neighborhood. Half of that children, half that class was ESL. We were blessed with the fact that we also had a teacher that could speak Spanish. I was in that classroom all the time. The volunteers in that classroom, ladies that spent there, were all from our community locally and have kids and have an interest in that- in that classroom and with their children's education. We also gave all those other kids every opportunity and worked wonderfully well, and we worked one-on-one with them to try and help the teacher get them up to class level. When you start out with a class that's 50% not on grade level, the teacher struggles to catch them up, where your child just makes a little bit of an improvement. That's not fair to the overall classroom and demographics. Look at the teacher turnover rate. That's another thing you need to concern. You're not keeping enough of the seasoned teachers to help the incoming young teachers, and you're losing them, and then you're replacing them with new teachers. Why should my child every year be faced with an inexperienced teacher if we don't get an experienced teacher? There are more Hampton Oak families up in this thing that have not spoke to you, and I hope you take to heart the concerns that we have. You're losing a lot of community kids. You will be losing a lot more, and this problem will not just follow and stay in Hampton Oaks. Where are these kids going to middle school? The influx that we see when these kids checked in after school or later throughout the year are all of, you know, your ESL students. This problem should have been addressed a year or two ago, and now I truly hope that this is going to be addressed before, because if we're here for another year, my children will no longer be at Hampton Oaks. They will be pulled out. And I'd like to say to the young lady, Mrs. Ostrom, my daughter goes to North Stafford High School, and she did a story on lacrosse for the girls. I say she did a phenomenal job for coming up here. I hope you do look as well, even if you start off at the club level, get club into the North Stafford High School or all the high schools before you can maybe make it a team, and then down the road, look, again, proactive. What's the interest rate, the interest in the sport? How can it be funded if we have enough parents to volunteer? If you find that and build up that base, then you have a stronger program that you can kick off to start off right away, which should have been done with Hampton Oaks.
Time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak? If not, I will close public comment. Eleven point oh one, Board Committee Reports. Mrs. Phillips will start at your end. Committee reports. Ms. Kidby. Mr. McCosker. Mrs. Baumke.
I could not attend the Park and Recreation Committee meeting last week. I will get- I was out of town for health reasons, and I will get an update from the Park and Rec Committee Chair, and I'll have that for the next meeting. Thank you.
Moving on to Board Comments. Ms. Reimboldt, we'll begin with you, and on this evening, Ms. Sealy.
Just wanted to add to the comments about the sports. This is an area that is always of interest to our students and our parents, and I remember about ten years ago, we looked into middle school sports because, at the time, I had a child playing soccer and saying, "Why don't we have soccer in middle school?" And I had parents asking me, "Why don't we have volleyball in middle school?" And the answer was, "Well, we look at that every decade or so," and I think another decade has probably passed, so it's time to start looking at those sports, not for the coming year, but perhaps for next year. I don't know if it takes a task force or if you want to appoint somebody, but I'd say at this point, let's bring in the community members as well, because they're the ones that really ultimately support our sports. We know we- I mean, we pay for the coaches, but the parents are out there supporting those sports, and when you look at swimming, Mrs. Reimboldt can tell you, what do we do? We buy the swim caps. I think in lacrosse, I don't even think we pay for anything other than transportation. But I'd like to have us look at that again this coming year and, you know, not just for the girls lacrosse, although I think that's important because we do have boys lacrosse, but let's take a look at the middle school sports as well because they feed into the high school, if that's possible. Thank you.
Mrs. Baumke.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Sydney for speaking, and also Mr. Stevens for his comments and ideas about Stafford High School, and I think that was good that you were here because three of the people in the Construction Department are here. I also want to thank Dr. Bridges for the book that he gave us tonight, Schools Cannot Do It Alone, by Jamie Valmer. So we're going to have a race to see who can finish the book first, okay? And then we'll need you a management- we need a management summary on it. Thank you.
Mr. McCosker.
Well, I'd just like to thank the two committees, Melanie Daniels and the Gifted Committee. Super job, insightful, succinct report. Great work this year, and we'll do better next year. And then, of course, CIP, Irene and, yeah, Mary Beth, and just awesome. And I don't know, I guess, am I the only one left on the committee now if you guys all leave? So, hold on, Madam Chair, am I allowed to give the report next year, then?
Be very busy.
No, I'm not allowed to give the report, so-
You have to be reappointed.
I have to be reappointed. They're going to already get rid of me because of the old profferoonie. Okay, anyway, great job, and thanks so much for your hard work, you know, every week, sometimes twice a week with the meetings. Gifted girls lacrosse, Ms. Ostrom, Sydney. Their team, the seven-eight B, finished second, and it was, I think it was the last minute or so that goal was scored to beat them, or last thirty seconds. And I don't know if you all understand the, you know, the gravity of this situation here. These girls in the seventh and eighth grade lacrosse are going up north to these teams that have been playing for years, for years, and they- and they beat almost everybody up there, and they lost by one goal in thirty seconds. You know, as I always say, there's only a few good states that produce excellent lacrosse players in Virginia, New York, and Maryland are a few of them. So when these girls get, you know, look at it, if you look at it as a business proposition, these girls are going to be- have a huge leg up when you're a lacrosse player, because everybody produces a basketball player, everybody produces a soccer player, but not too many people produce lacrosse players. And every Ivy League school and every school, private school, has one. Girls end, boys. Thank you for speaking. Even though I don't agree with them, I love coming up here, talking about the schools, citing opinions. Some of the opinions I agree with, but I think we still do need to build a new school. I think it's the right thing to do. But back to the point. The point is that, you know, I am just one board member up here. Ms. Baumke is just one board member up here. Folks need to come, and I was very happy tonight. It's going to make it a late night, especially, you know, they're all twitching, they're all moving around because I'm talking too much, but it's going to be a late night, and but I'm so happy to hear people come up and speak about the community issues. I mean, that's where the rubber meets the road. That's it.
Ms. Kidby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, it's good to be back. I've been gone for a while, but feels good to be back, and I'm glad that everyone had a successful graduation. I'm sorry to have missed that. One of the agenda items that we have this evening has to do with our advisory committees and identifying the parameters for those particular committees for next year. And I will be addressing that as that particular agenda item comes up, but in my comments, I did want to mention that I did some research about advisory committees, and our group of advisory committees looks very, very different than a lot of our counties that are to the north and to the south of us, and we may want to take an opportunity as a board to evaluate what our needs are in relation to those committees, but I'll, again, I'll address that more as that particular item comes up. The other thing that I have been noticing that I thought might be beneficial, as I was going to these various websites, looking at trying to figure out what their advisory committees were, I was finding that many of them have what's called a board brief. And what it is, is every time there is a school board meeting, there is an electronic document that's prepared, posted on the website, that gives a one-page statement, if you will, or a summary, for want of a better word, of the- what was conducted during that meeting, what action items were passed, what was discussed. And it's very, very easy then for the community to be able to go to that board brief and read through that and know exactly what the board did at the last meeting. Might be something we want to consider in terms of communication with our- with our community. I know that there has been some communication with the Board of Supervisors of late about shared services, and I was just, I know there was a couple pieces of communication that went back and forth while I was out of town, and I just wondered if maybe the board could get an update from staff or whoever is- has that information of where we are in terms of that evaluation. I think staff members are going to get together and evaluate possible shared services between the county and the school board, and I just don't know if we're anywhere in that regard, and I would like to get some information on that. Also, I understand there was a recent look at the Health Benefits Fund and some evaluation of where we are in that regard, too, so if the board perhaps could get an update on anything that was discussed in that regard. I would like to thank our Hampton Oaks community for coming forth and sharing their points of view in relation to some of the challenges that are being faced on a daily basis at Hampton Oaks Elementary School, which are a bit unique to Hampton Oaks, but also are similar to some of our other schools. I want to assure them that this particular board member, and I think the board as a whole, is certainly looking at opportunities to be able to support all the students, particularly our students at Hampton Oaks Elementary School with the unique situation that they have faced and continue to face. And I don't want the community to feel that we are ignoring all options, which include options that address boundaries. Those are certainly options that need to be looked at, but those need to be looked at as Stafford County public schools as a whole, because it's not just a unique situation for Hampton Oaks Elementary School in terms of how lines are drawn and how its district. And I believe our staff is taking action in that direction to be able to have an opportunity to look at that as county as a whole, and I believe that that's going to be coming forward probably within the next six months, and I just wanted the Hampton Oaks community to know that that is being considered. I think lacrosse is a great idea. Perhaps we ought to look at some way that we can get it into our high schools, even as club. Good suggestion. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you. I wanted to start off by thanking the CIP Committee and the Gifted Committee for their presentations. They were really great presentations, and if that was thirteen minutes, it didn't seem like it, so. Easy to follow and understand and all that, so that was great. Got a lot out of it. As far as lacrosse goes, yeah, club is a great way to start, and I think most everybody knows that fields are the issue that we have as far as high school lacrosse goes, but you've got to start somewhere. And, you know, there was a young lady that graduated from Colonial Forge that went to the Naval Academy, and while she was there, her four years, she just graduated, she was able to start a club league at the Naval Academy, so now they have that, and I had no idea that that was something that she was doing. So, thank you for coming and talking, and I think that's something that probably could be thrown together, so, just saying. Hampton Oaks Elementary, I didn't know that it had a bad reputation until tonight. I mean, I had never heard that anybody ever say that, so I was- that anybody ever say that. So, I was shocked. I knew that we deal with the high ESL population there, but had no idea of the feelings of the, of the parents, you know, until all of this started. So, it does take the squeaky wheel. So, thank you for taking time out of your evenings to come and speak to us, because that's how things get started as well. And I hope everybody is having a great summer. That's all.
Later this evening, we're going to be talking about an item called the Strategic Plan. And however anybody feels about it, I'm sure they'll address it at that point in time. I personally want to first of all thank our community. The Strategic Plan started with a question to our community. And it was responded by many, many, many of our parents, our teachers, our staff members. So, first of all, thank you to the community for getting that ball rolling. I also want to thank Mrs. Kimby and Mrs. Phillips, who I had, I had spent some time on the Strategic Planning Committee. And the meetings were, you know, three to four hours long. A lot of things were discussed and almost a workshop setting. It was a very dynamic, they were very dynamic meetings. So, I want to thank the two of my peers here for taking the time and the effort. And I know you helped formulate this strategic plan. I also want to thank the principals and the APs and the teachers for their work on the Strategic Plan. In, very often in education, we swing one way, we swing the other way, and we come back to the middle. And what I look at the Strategic Plan is that, that kind of balance that we were lacking in the prior Strategic Plan. So, I'm looking forward to, to hearing what everybody has to say. And again, thank you to all of the staff, the community members, and our board members who were involved.
Dr. Bridges, any comment?
Just quickly, Ms. Kimby, the letter on the shared services that was sent over to us from the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And Ms. Johnson's response was, number one, we need to assess and evaluate what we're currently doing. And then, number two, staffs would generate a list of services that could be presented to both bodies. We are scheduled to meet with the county staff about budget and some other issues on August the sixth here. So, we'll have some conversations about that. We did discover that this is not new. There's been a report and a study done several years ago on shared services. So, I mean, it's just comes back around. So, we found that document and will be using that as well. And lastly, I hope you enjoy the book, Schools Cannot Do It Alone. It talks a great deal in there about community conversations, particularly with that seventy-five percent of the population in Tidewater County who don't have kids in our schools. And I hope that you will be open to this coming school year in some form or fashion, engage in our community in some of those conversations.
Item fourteen, consent agenda, consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second. Thank you for that second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item number fifteen point zero one, the superintendent announces appointments approved, if any under consent. Thank you, sir. Fifteen point oh two, approve the gifted and focused five-year plan for 2012 to 2017. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
No, you have a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Fifteen point oh three, approve the proposed revisions to Regulation 2401 R Code of Student Conduct, Rule 11 and Rule 23 only. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Since I wasn't here when the original item came forward, I'd like to, I'd like to engage in some discussion relating particularly to the cell phones. Having met with three principals and also having, having had an opportunity to discuss at length with several of our educators and certainly some teenagers in relation to this particular proposed change, I've been torn, very torn, about what direction to go. I tried desperately not to let my age get in the way of my decision, but I am what I am. So, in that regard, I suppose I can't change that. Nevertheless, I've come to the decision that this particular policy change may not accomplish perhaps what we intended to accomplish. My understanding is with administration permission, the cell phones can be used currently in the classrooms for academic purposes. And so, in that regard, the cell phones have an opportunity to be used and would be, could be used even if we initiate a bring-your-own-technology program into our high schools. Now, in relation to allowing the cell phones to be used in hallways and the cafeteria, the question that I keep coming back to over and over and over and over again, is that going to enhance learning? And I just can't see where it will. I just, I just can't see where it will. However, it could enhance some other aspects of the school community. And I've heard discussions in that regard. So, my point of view is to set forth perhaps a policy that certainly allows the cell phones to be used for academic purposes with the approval of the classroom teacher and the administration. And perhaps to leave it up to the individual high schools whether or not they want to allow cell phones outside of the classroom, i.e. hallways and cafeterias. That way, we are empowering our school leaders at the school level to determine what is in the best interest of their school. I have a very strong feeling that that policy should not be brought to our middle school level. I'm very concerned about cell phones being used in the hallways and in the cafeterias in a middle school environment where we have sixth graders and seventh graders. They're still very, very young people. However, I would feel extremely comfortable and confident to leave it up to our individual school administration, principals, and his or her staff to come to some kind of consensus as to what's in the best interest of their school outside of the classroom in relation to cell phones.
Further discussion?
I understand what you're saying, but I just think it would create chaos to have a school-by-school policy.
Why?
Why? Well, Mrs. Ryanbault, remember those student roundtables years and years ago?
Yeah.
And the kids would come to us from, from the high schools and they'd say, well, in my school, you can do this. And in my school, you can do that. Dress code is a good example. The two-finger rule, which I'd never heard of. You had to have a strap that was at least as wide as two fingers. In some schools and other schools, you know, it was all different. But I would be very concerned about something. And it's not a reflection on the administrators. But just implementing something like that, I, I just, I would foresee chaos. And I could not support anything that would say we will basically permit a different policy in each of our schools. You know, I really like your points about, is this going to add to the education or the learning? I think those are really good questions. And I, maybe it's my age, too, but I would go with your response. Certainly not in the hallways. I mean, I can foresee people going down texting and bumping into someone, you know, not, not looking ahead. But I, I just couldn't support something like that. And with, with no disrespect to you, because I think you have a very good grasp of what's going on in the schools and, you know, having been a teacher and you're in the schools a lot. But just looking at it from a, a system-wide perspective with the number of high schools we have, I, I just, not just the students, but I think the parents could reasonably lodge complaints about different treatment than we're going to say someone's getting an advantage versus somebody else. And how much time are we then going to have to spend administratively dealing with all these issues that we would have self-inflicted if, if something like that were approved?
Mrs. Ryanbault?
Yeah, this, these are the reasons why I will not vote to support this. First of all, sexting, unlimited texting, increased cheating on tests, increased opportunity for drug dealing, increased bullying, a major distraction in class. Teachers were not consulted, and I've been told by teachers that they're the ones that are going to have to deal with the distractions and the problems in the classroom. More opportunity for invasion of privacy. So consequently, these are the reasons that I cannot support this.
Ms. Phillips?
I have a question for Dr. Martin. Please don't get up. So, if, if we voted this down, then that would mean that nobody could use like any kind of iPad then as well. Is that correct?
That is not correct. Currently, you have Rule 23 that allows for the use of electronic tools and/or applications through administrative permission. And the principal said that to allow that application to the teacher, you know, based on the structural requirement.
Okay.
Wait, Randy has something to say.
And so, could that be stretched out to include smartphones?
Smartphones, you have the capability of turning off the phone component of it and to use the application piece. Very similar to what you can see when you go into airplane mode, you have that application. Phones, cell phones are no longer just cell phones. Many instances, they are smartphones. They have your, your e, your e-mail already on there. So, that could be stretched out for that purpose. And this will be on instructional use and to augment the instructional process.
Thank you.
Dr. Bridges?
Just to kind of build on that a little bit, I think, as Dr. Martin has just alluded to, you have a provision that allows electronic devices to be used in the school. So, the whole BYOT, from our perspective, was just establishing some guidelines for doing that, whether the charging batteries or somebody steals the apparatus and not holding the school division responsible for those things. But that, that is already there. Principals could have been doing that all along. It got more attention because of BYOT. But that's, as I said, you already have a provision, that's, you can do that. That's separate from the cellphone, because that's off and not seen, as I understand it. So, as you look at this and you make your vote, sometimes, well, I don't know that a lot of our kids or their parents are able to provide a iPad and a smartphone. They may opt for one or the other. And kids, as we know, the most convenient thing for them is, is the phone, not the iPad or the laptop, which they could use. So, we can do them separate. In other words, if you vote not to allow them, to keep the cellphone policy as it currently is, they can still use BYOT. I mean, we, we can do that because it's on your books. That's not a problem. But the other piece is whether you change the cellphone piece. And a great point by Ms. Kimby about learning, but I don't know how much learning occurs now between glass periods in reference to phone. So, just, just for thought, those two items are really kind of separate.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to say that thanks. I mean, it seems like everyone, I'm learning a whole bunch of new information. Ms. Kimby wasn't here last time, and, you know, Dr. Bridges chimed in. And, you know, I kind of thought the same thing, you know, what are they, in the hallways, do I want the kids, and I said this last time, do I want the kids and texting and their heads down on their phone, not communicating orally, not learning those good verbal communication skills and during their three minutes between classes? Because I know as soon as they go home, they're going to grab it. If they can afford it, they're going to grab the phone and start texting. And then my other, I've always said that I have issue with, you know, you know, the one, the one kid bringing in an expensive phone and then the other kid doesn't have enough money for it. And I know that's, I can't fix that up here, and I know that's life. But I, those are some of the things that I think about when I, when I talk about this issue. I was with a bunch of teenagers the other night at a swim meet, and I said, well, this is a perfect opportunity. After they were all huddled together, and I said, what do you think about the cellphone policy? And then two of them said, you know, funny stuff like, oh, let it happen, you know? And then the other ones kind of were like, looking at me like, I don't know. I'm not sure. And that kind of scared me. It's like, okay, why, I would have, I was fully expecting them to come up and say, this is, this is great, and do away with it. So, again, yeah, I am not for cell phones in the hallways. I'm not for, if the teacher and the administration would like to do something in the class with it like it already stands, I'm okay with the way the old policy was. But, you know, think, think, yeah, the current policy, but not, not changing it, you know, just, I think we have so much more to learn about this that we really need to just kind of sit back and get some more data and then maybe come forward again at another time. That's all. I mean, it's, let's kind of, kind of, not table it, but, you know, just kind of move it, move it down the road.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, Ms. Bonkey, would you like to comment? I'm going to give everyone an opportunity and then another round.
Well, I'm going to weigh in. I'm, I'm a pretty darn conservative person, but I like to listen and be educated by the administrators that are running our division. And this is just a hard one for me. I'll be honest, I could go either way. I've talked to teachers that, that are okay with it. And I've talked to others that really have a real problem with it in the, in the classrooms. I haven't really talked to that many administrators since I've been out of town. You know, the teachers were, that allow the cellphone, it's already happening. You know, I asked my daughter recently at Stafford Hyde, you need to go down and use the telephone. And she looked at me like I had four heads. Why, why would I go use the telephone in the front office? Because that's what you're supposed to do. You know, at these overcrowded high schools, I will say, they really shouldn't have their heads down in between classes. You know, that, that really is a safety issue. That's what I think about more than the fact that they're not really going to be learning anything. They do need to be paying attention to where they're going, what they're carrying, et cetera, and be aware of their surrounding and what's happening. I also like to be a leader in, in things when it comes to the school division, just because, you know, now personally, I don't like to buy the brand-new car that's out there, because I'd rather they work out all the tweaks on it and then I'll come along and buy it when I know that it won't require as much maintenance. But on something like this, I don't mind being the leader if we really feel that it's something that we absolutely need to have and that we've done all of our research. And I think we have. I just, I'm having a hard time with this. And I would tend to vote that I would like to keep the policy the same at this point in time.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion not to change the current cellphone policy.
Second.
Can I make my comment?
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion on the amendment. The substitute motion. I can do that. Discussion on the substitute motion. Now, wait.
Is there a second for the substitute?
Yes, Mr. McCosker.
It sounds to me like the new cellphone regulation would possibly protect Um, it sounds to me like uh the new cellphone um regulation would possibly protect um the schools from, from liability, um, was what I heard. And I mean, if, if we're going to treat this like we do the school calendar, then let's not ever revisit it again because it's mortifying to me to continually insult our staff with every year, oh, there's two people that don't like it. Get, you know, I mean, Stafford County does not like change. We do not like change and, and no, we would never buy that first-year model car, ever. We wait like 20 years. So um, anyway, I just, um, I, I think it's a shame because we um have an opportunity to, uh, to possibly be a, a leader with, uh, with this and um I feel like we run around with horse blinders on and telling our staff, yeah, you guys spend hours and hours and hours and hours in committees and then bring us something so we can vote it down. And that mortifies me. It absolutely mortifies me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, we have, we have, we have an, um, two, two active motions right now.
Well, you have a substitute.
Substitute, okay. I'm sorry, just trying to get it straight, don't want to vote on the wrong thing.
Two motions, just one is on the table.
One is on the table. So, uh, we have a, a, a substitute, so, a substitute motion to not change-
Change the current cellphone policy.
The current cellphone policy.
Which would be not to approve this item, right.
Do you want me to reword it?
Well, the-
It's the same thing.
Because it's either, yeah, I was, are you calling, are you calling for the question at this point in time?
Substitute motion would be-
The substitute motion is to vote down this change, which is what is happening in the first place.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we need to, uh, vote on the amended motion.
Substitute motion.
Or the substitute motion.
Which is?
Which is to not change the cellphone policy.
Current cellphone policy.
The current cellphone policy.
And another way to say that would be to not approve the proposed regulations.
But it's, it's the same thing as, we're asking to approve the proposal in the original motion. It's literally the same thing. We're either going to approve it or disapprove it.
Well, but it's just a matter of wording. If you say not to change the policy, that's different than not to approve the proposed-
That's fine. Motion not to-
...visions to regulations. I just, it's just important that, it's important, no, it's important that we, that we vote on it accurately.
I, I'm fine, I agree. The change in-
Well, that's, I think that's what you meant.
Adjustment to the wording of my substitute motion. Yes.
Not to approve 15.03.
I just lost 10 calories on that. That was awesome.
Have a cookie, Mr. McCosker.
Okay.
You'll feel better.
So the, uh, motion on the floor is to not approve 15.03. That is correct.
That's what you seconded.
That is what you seconded.
Of the substitute.
Yes. I'm trying to work through it.
It's like these double negatives.
Is there going to be a de, double negative right there? Okay. All right. All those in favor of not approving 15.03?
Yes.
Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Take the count?
You need to pull the board.
Ms. Bomke?
No, uh, yes, yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Kidby?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
No.
Ms. Reimboldt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay. Motion passes by a vote of five to two.
Okay.
Got it, okay.
Well, that's, that's one for the books. The, the motion passed not to approve.
The motion.
The motion, the-
Then we're going to move to 1504.
It's easy.
Approve the increase-
Motion to approve.
Second. Might I read it for you?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Approve the increase of 10 cents for lunch for the 2012-2013 school year. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 15.05, approve a health and physical education grant awarded from the Stafford Hospital Community Service Fund in the amount of $78,300. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to make sure that we send a big thank you to the Stafford Hospital Community for their continued support of our school system.
Uh, yeah, this is one of those items.
That I believe was brought forward, this is an action item. When I wasn't here, if I may, I have just a couple questions.
Please.
Um, perhaps for staff, oh, sit down.
I can stand right here.
Are you sure? Okay. Um, first of all, that the, um, the WellNet.
Uh huh.
Uh, my understanding with WellNet is that the $27,400 is for the initial license, right? Okay, for all of our schools?
Correct.
All right. And then beyond that, if I read it correctly, it's $1,500 per school per year to keep it?
I believe it's $1,500 total.
Total? So we're not looking at 45 grand a year to keep it? It's only 1,500 a year to, oh, much better. Okay, thank you. The other, the cardio equipment, video tours, are there monitors on those?
Yes.
Very cool. And um, they said there was going to be five or six for each high school?
Yes.
So they're only tw, $2,000 a pop?
We negotiated with one of our local vendors and as a partnership and the part of the end kind that we brought forth into the grant is that we were able to get them at a reduced rate as a partnership.
Kudos. Good job. Amazing. Great.
I noticed you have an injured leg. You didn't do that on one of these bikes, did you?
No.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure they're safe. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion?
And me and my rehab, I'll be using the upper body exercises to make sure I maintain my cardiovascular fitness.
Any further discussion or questions for Dr. Martin? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 15.06, approve Medicaid consultant in the amount of $8,400 for the 2012-2013 school year from budgeted operating funds. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
And any discussion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I really apologize for this. How are we currently handling this? Is this someone that we currently have a contract with?
We do. We've had a contract with Mr. El Cesar since we began Medicaid claiming and billing for Medicaid, so it's an annual contract routine.
Okay.
A little increase in his consulting fee.
All right, terrific, thanks.
Yes. Uh, any other further, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 15.08, approve the 2012-2017 strategic plan.
You mean 15.07?
Oh, what did I say?
You said 15.08.
My apologies. Uh, 15.07, organization of 2012-2013 school board advisory committees, confirm committees, purposes, and liaisons. Uh, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes.
I think that we are going to be discussing this at length, um, at the retreat.
Okay, so we're going to approve these committees, but then we might change them?
There's nobody on them yet.
There is nobody on the, on the committees yet. This is just the purpose.
I, I understand, I understand that, but should we be approving the, the, the fact that we're going to have these committees when there's possibilities that we may have additional committees or changes in the committees or?
We have, we have added committees and uh realigned purposes mid-year sometimes and, and as, as with the fine arts advisory.
I'm, I'm fine with that, other than that, that discussion that we have at the retreat. For example, I, I've looked at, at several other committees and I mean, there's um Minority Achievement Oversight Committee, what a neat opportunity. Uh, there's uh Safe Schools Committees, there's um, uh, which, which, uh, uh, community involvement in the bullying issue, which is a constant issue, communication committees, lots of opportunities for other committees that might enhance. And then uh maybe some of our committees are redundant or, or not, um, not being able to define themselves well, you know, that kind of thing.
Would you look at this as a, as a conversation that is going to take some time because the already advertised and scheduled is, it is, I believe it's in August is the first advisory committee. And, and, and I apologize, possibly I, when we had conversations about putting it on the retreat, I, I was not under the impression that would be
It's just, yes.
Uh, this year, for this coming year.
Okay, perhaps, yeah, perhaps we could-
That's my misinterpretation.
Um, I'm sure that's a shame.
Because some of these, uh, and if, if you're talking about safety committees and uh things like that, that has to, that, there's a, there's a, a, a communication time where we can talk about this, put it on the webpage. We need to talk about it first and see if these things are, uh, consensus for all board members.
And, and I don't want to take board time now for something that, that we may be looking at. So, Madam Chair, I think you have a very good point where I may be premature in trying to get this into this calendar year and, and wait until the following calendar year, but I, I-
But there needs to be ongoing discussion on this.
Yeah, I look forward to that discussion at our retreat.
As do I. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Madam Chair, I also have a comment on this. Um, one of the committees, and, and this might not be the time for this conversation, but um, the Budget and Finance Committee, I would really like to have that committee at some point in time restructure so that, um, and this kind of blends in with what we're trying to do with our, um, um, our strategic plan. As we were talking earlier today about community involvement, I really feel that we need to have business partners on a Budget and Finance Committee. Um, I would like to see some teachers on that committee. Um, I would like to see maybe some service employees. I feel that that is probably our most important committee in the entire school division because it deals with funding and the resources that we have and the limited resources that we have during these tough economic times. And if this continues, we need, I feel like this committee should be the driving force of the school division. And I really like the strategic plan, but I very much strongly believe that it would be great to have business partners, current business partners, and even business partners that we would like to-
Stafford Education Association.
Right. Um, so I would really like to expand that committee and I'm not sure how that all works with this approval for this evening.
Well, and that's part and parcel of what we were just discussing is, this, I, there's a number of things that we have all talked about with it, with, uh, with regard to the advisory committees. This is, this is a long conversation. This also has to include staff. So um, at this point in time, you've got folks who are already interested in, uh, serving on the advisory committees as they stand right now.
Okay.
Um, and they are valuable, as referenced by this group of presentations and the prior group of presentations. So I think this is a conversation that we need to begin at retreat this year and continue through the year.
Okay.
If there is no objection to that?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Just, just one comment. Um, we can approve this.
Yes.
And, but then there's no reason why, for example, the budget committee cannot be reorganized.
Agree.
Because we have members that come on all during the year.
Agreed.
So that's something that we, since we'll be talking about it at retreat, and then perhaps we can then make the change regarding that specific committee.
Absolutely.
Or any other ones, I guess, that we need to make adjustments to.
Absolutely. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 15.08, approve the 2012-2017 strategic plan. May I have a motion to approve?
That moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion?
Well, I just have to say that I asked Stephanie, is that Holly Jordan out there in the audience? So, welcome back. Um, I love the strategic plan. Um, I've been out of town. Um, I've read it. Um, I totally endorse it. It seems to me that, that some of the goals that we have in there, we might be able to meet before 2017. Um, but anyway, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of the entire strategic plan.
Madam Chairman, I think the superintendent, are you going to say something?
Not if you're going to vote approve it, no.
Is there any further discussion?
I, I have something I wanted to bring up.
Please.
Okay. Um, I believe that this strategic plan needs to include science and social studies, to include history, civics, and geography. I think that we are neglecting two core subjects that are vital to our students, and I believe that they need to be included. I, I appreciate the format. I think it's clear, concise. I like the charts. I like the goals. Um, you know, I, I'm very pleased with the rest of the format of this, of this document. But I believe that it's a serious mistake not to include those subjects. And I believe what this is going to cause is people are going to turn around and say, okay, so, you know, literacy, math, and 21st century skills, well, gee, what about the sciences? You know, gee, what about civics? What about history? I mean, these are core subjects and they belong in the strategic plan, in my opinion. Um, and then the only other thing that I do, I think that would be important to change is in regard to our beliefs. I believe that excellence should be at the top of that list, um, because basically our goal is to provide an excellent education system for our children. I believe that that, when you look down a list like this, usually people will assume that what's on the top of the list is the priority. And I believe the priority should be excellence. But, and that's, those are the two things that I feel need to be done with the strategic plan.
Um, can I, can I ask the two board members that were on the committee a, a question about that? Were, were those items discussed within the structure of the, uh,
I'll take it.
The, the, the committee?
Absolutely they were. And I'm going to invite Holly to come up and to, um, address Ms. Reimboldt's question and concern, which was a, an active topic during the course of the strategic plans. So Holly, if you could address that, that'd be great.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board and Dr. Bridges. That was something that we discussed at length. Um, the committee that, that took place over the couple months from November to May consisted of our principals and our teachers, um, our support staff and our board members. And we engaged in a lot of very in-depth discussion about what to include within that plan. Um, there was a lot of data that we looked at, um, over the, the process, one of which was a survey that we put out to our entire community. Um, we had over 3,000 individuals respond to that or, who were parents, community members, and staff members, and sometimes all three of those. Um, and what we asked them were what were the most important skills that our students needed, um, out for the future? And the top skills were communication, reading, mathematics, critical thinking, and problem-solving. We coupled that with looking at student performance data, um, looking at a variety of data such as our graduation rate, dropout rate, SOL scores, looking at subgroups within those SOL scores, AP, IB, SAT, and what our students' continuing education plans are. And through that, um, looking at all of those data, what bubbled to the top, what surfaced to the top was literacy, mathematics, and the 21st century skills. And, and we discussed that perception that if some of the other items weren't included, would it seem like we didn't care about them, that they weren't important. Um, and, and, and we understood that that could be a possible perception. Um, but within the strategic plan, um, what we're looking to do is, is to state what are our, our, um, top priorities. Um, it's not to say that we wouldn't do anything else, we wouldn't continue the programs that we have, um, but, but these would be our top priorities. And, and the committee felt, based off of the data that they looked at, that these were the areas that we really needed to look at. And that by strengthening those areas, we would strengthen all core content areas and the arts as well. Those, um, 21st century skills, communication, problem solving, critical thinking, I mean, that can be from your physical education classes to your science classes to your language courses. And then, of course, a strong background in literacy will impact and, and help every content area. So we definitely did take that into consideration and then that was the ultimate decision of the committee. So we definitely did take that into consideration and then that was the ultimate decision of the committee, was to include those specific areas.
Madam Chairman, I understand that, but quite frankly, out of sight is out of mind. And to me, then, this is totally, these subjects are necessary. They need to be in the Strategic Plan. Where, you know, when we started the N-Star Program, we piloted that program. And one of the reasons we piloted the program and it became so successful was that what's happening, for example, in the federal government, we have scientists that are all retiring, but there aren't people coming up to fill those positions because they found that if students aren't hooked on Science and Math, by the time they're in middle school, most likely they're not going to go into those fields. We've got, you know, tremendous amount of things going on in our medical fields, technology in terms of medicine and health. Again, this is the Sciences. We have people that, you know, if you walked around and asked some people on the street, now who's your president? Or, you know, what type of a government you have, there's a lot of people that, you know, would not necessarily know that because it's not given any type of importance. And these things are important. Our history is important. Our civics is important. Geography is important because we need to know what's going on in this high-tech world around us and even where places are. So I have to say that I think those are vital and they need to be included in the Strategic Plan. I understand what you're saying about what your discussion is, but I think, yeah, I think that we are misguided if we don't include two very core academics in this plan.
Did we get that specific in the plan that's currently operational? Did we do math, reading, English? Okay. And I understand out of sight and out of mind. We are held to accountability measures in those areas from the state. So we're not going to drop off what we're doing with Social Studies and History and certainly not in Science because we're accountable. The arts aren't there. CTE isn't there. Athletics isn't there. Everything couldn't be in the plan. And we kind of took the survey and took the information that was provided to us and we came to those areas. But this is too important for it not to be holistically approved by this full board and administration. So if it's the pleasure of the board, Ms. Reinbold, that we add those things, then I don't recommend that the plan be approved. If it's going to be 615243, that's a bad signal. And out of respect for the committee, I think the committee should be involved with any additional information to add it to it. So those four teachers, who were Teachers of the Year in their schools, and also our Teacher of the Year was on this committee, deserve an opportunity to engage with that and not be something that Central Office added to the document, which means I'm not going to call them in for a meeting in September when they just get back to school. So it'll probably be October before we can get to that. I don't know exactly when the timeline is in terms of us having to have this plan approved, but it'll be several months before it comes back to you.
What is the timeline? Is there a specific timeline?
It should probably be approved by November. It is a state requirement that we have a Strategic Plan. That plan needs to be periodically updated and has to be approved by the board. We, our plan was passed in 2007, so we are at the stage that we do need to pass a Strategic Plan and have that approved by the board.
Okay. Can I make my one comment first? I apologize for jumping. I think what my feeling about this is, and I think I said it earlier, the Strategic Plan that came to us, was it two years ago?
The update.
Okay. It was complained that that was a laundry list. There's too much on it. There's too much garbage. There's too much minutia. There's too much tasking. There's too many goals. It can't be achieved. There were a lot of, and I was one of them. I said it too. You know, I look at this one and I go, everything that's in this particular Strategic Plan is in support of everything we do. That's why I like it so much. Not that there is things missing or that things are being ignored. I think the core things in here are, number one, supported by the community. And number two, are the basis and the foundation from which everything that we do in what we want to be our learning organization stems from. I do support this and I understand, Dr. Bridges, that you would want to have unanimous support. And I do understand that. I like it. I would support this 100 percent. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Oh, Mrs. Baumke?
Madam Chair, the one page, Ms. Jordan, that refers to Literacy and Mathematics, just a general question. I see it has Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment, IB. The Commonwealth Governor's School is a program. Is that why it's not referenced in there? Because its classes are already covered as far as DE and AP. Is that correct? Okay. That's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, if I could respond to the concerns that we have in relation to the Sciences and the Social Studies or Social Sciences and perhaps even our Arts and our Physical Education. Those are all viable concerns and I understand your concern, Ms. Reinbold, particularly in the Science and the Social Sciences. But as I look at this Literacy and Mathematics, if I look at these goals, for example, let's take a look at goal number one. By 2017, 95 percent of all third graders will be reading at grade level. If we can accomplish that, if we can accomplish goal number two, 15 percentile points or increase 15 percentile points in SOLs, if we can accomplish goal number three, that the percentage of ninth and 12th grade, ninth through 12th grade students taking college-level courses, Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment in English, and earning qualifying scores, if that is all happening, then it occurs to me, as a school board member, that the Social Sciences will take care of themselves. If I look at Mathematics and know that by 2017, the percentage of ninth through 12th grade students taking college-equivalent Advanced Placement Mathematics and qualifying, I know, I know those kids are going to take higher-level Science as well. I know they will. If they're taking that level of math. So if we can narrow our focus to these very key elements in learning, these key elements in learning, I agree with the committee consensus, which was, these other courses will increase in terms of their proficiency as well. That was the consensus of the committee.
You've been patient. I'm so sorry, Mrs. Hume.
Oh, not a problem. I had my turn earlier. But I just want to say I understand Mrs. Reinbold's concerns because everything is important. I mean, it just depends on where you're coming from. And as Dr. Bridges mentioned, athletics. Athletics is important. You know, it's not going to be here. But looking at the language here, it says, "Based on the answers to the question," and the question is, "What are the most important skills students must learn in order to be prepared for future successes?" "Based on the answers to that question, as well as analysis of student performance data, three areas emerged as the top priorities for Stafford County Public Schools." Now, it doesn't mean that there are not other priorities. These are the top. And I think Mrs. Kidby had a very good analogy. You know, if we are successful with Literacy, Mathematics, and adding in the 21st Century Skills, then we're going to enhance our student learning in all these other areas, foreign languages, you know, the civics, the history, the government. I would be very concerned about adding to this without adding everything. And that's not, that's not practical. I was not involved with the Strategic Plan, but I have been involved at the school level on the school improvement committees and spent days talking about, you know, what word do we use here? You know, what word goes first? What word goes next? And I know when this comes to us, that there was a lot of thought put into it. And I'm going to support this because I know the work that went into it, I think a lot of thought. And I think we have come a tremendously long way from when we paid $75,000 to some outfit from Texas to come in and write our first one. I mean, it was a bargain then because, you know, we had nothing to start with. But now, you know, this is our product and this is our community. And I think it's really good. And if we can do a portion of what this sets out as our goals, then I think we're going to come a long way in all the subjects. And I just, I couldn't support adding, you know, one or two or three more at this point. Besides the fact that the committee went to all that work, I just don't know how we distinguish, you know, what is more important because they're all important. But as long as we recognize that this doesn't say, "These are the priorities." This says, "These are the top priorities." So, you know, we were talking earlier about the title schools and, you know, we have an arbitrary cutoff at what number. There may not be much difference between Priority Three and Priority Four, but we have to cut that line somewhere. And I would hope that we could do this sooner rather than later. I think it'd be a really good thing to start the school year out with this plan in place. I think it sends a message to the staff, to the community, this is our plan. And if we can't even agree on a plan, that's a sad commentary.
Oh, thank you. Well, I appreciate Ms. Reinbold's comments and, you know, Science and that stuff is important. But I think, but the BUT word, I think we do need to move out with the plan. Now, this comes back up every year. If we see those metrics boxes starting to get filled and it looks like we have a little bit more room to add, then we add Science in next year and then, you know, when we relook it. But to get it moving, I'm forgetting this moving as written. And then, and then we relook it next year like we do. But your points are spot on.
Mrs. Phillips, do you have any comment?
Well, I'll just say that it was such a great committee of people that Holly put together. And there was such awesome group think going on. And it was a lot of fun to be a part of. And everybody worked really hard on it and put in hours and hours and hours.
Dr. Quinn got out of hand a couple of times.
Couple of times. We had to put him in timeout a couple of times, but he's all right now. So, that's all.
I would just like to say, I can't walk away without bringing this up. In our Adult Ed Program for the region, the number two things that we see where students are lacking and where students have dropped out of school is Literacy and Math. Those are the two things where they, and they will tell me on the phone, well, there's one or two subjects I don't do well in and it's either Math or Writing. And that's where they receive all their confidence in school over the years. And if they have those foundations, I strongly believe everything else falls into place. So, I mean, it happens every day on the phone with students. Some that are 50 years old, going back to school to get their GED, some that have just dropped out in the last five years. And it's the same story over and over again. So I think if they, I'm strongly convinced if they get those foundations, the rest falls into place.
Dr. Bridges, did you want to withdraw or?
I think Mrs. Reinbold wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I will vote to support this, but I would like to see these items added for the next update. And I would also like to request that, because we did a survey with 3,000 responses from our community, I'd like to request that a copy of that be given to the board members because I believe whenever we do that type of a survey, the board needs to see what our community is telling us.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Whoa.
Whoa, sorry.
So, well, if you're going to approve the document, but those things have to be added.
No, no, no. No, I'm saying every year, every year the Strategic Plan has to be updated. I would like this to be part of the conversation next year. In fact, I'll even volunteer to serve. I've been on the committee in the past. And I'll volunteer to serve next year.
This is a great broadening. Every year it's going to come back and get better.
I don't have a problem. I'm not saying anything is wrong with this work or any of the work that was done. But I would like to be part of the conversation next year to see if we can expand for those items. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. All right. Again, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I just, Holly, before you go, do stand right there. Ms. Kidby and Ms. Phillips, thank you for your involvement with this. I mean, Holly engaged in the conversations about this document. Holly's husband got a job and unfortunately she decided she'd go with him. So we lost her, but she has started this process and you all know the quality of work from this and from last year. And I wanted to make sure that she had a chance to see it through. So we appreciate you traveling a pretty good distance several times at the latter part of this to continue helping us get through this process. And you saved us about $75,000 on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you very much.
Doesn't that make you want to come back?
Next time, come back with a price tag and see how much we like you.
Thank you. Information items. 16.01, received information superintendent's proposed new regulation 18.01 are reports of certain acts. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? 16.02, approved proposed amendments to policy 2110 Home Instruction. Any questions for Mr. Nelson or staff, please?
I would just like to ask the reason for that change. There was a commenter tonight that commented, you were changing it from what is currently four courses a home instruction student can take to two at the high school. Is there a reason for that change?
We're not really changing it. This actually has been our practice for years. The language is antiquated because it predates your adoption of block scheduling in your high schools. Really, when we talked about semesters in the old policy, we're talking about the traditional semester, which ends at the mid-year point, end of January. We had never allowed more than two courses to be taken per year. It's the fact that we have switched to this block scheduling that caused our old policy language to become outdated because it speaks in terms of semesters, which made sense at the time this was originally adopted in probably about '92. So this is simply an updated language. We're not changing the number of credits. But the language right now is causing confusion because we have blocks which have semesters at three of our schools, which end in the midpoint of fall and the midpoint of spring, whereas in two of our high schools, they still end at the end of January. So we needed to clarify it and this does it. You can take two courses, as you always have been able to do, two credits max. And I would simply say, you don't have a requirement to allow home instruction students to take courses in your school. The state does not require, that's something that Stafford County basically has been in the vanguard to allow. Less than half of the school divisions permit students to take courses in the schools.
Mrs. Baumke?
I'm just curious, how many of our homeschool students take classes in our school division?
Had you asked me yesterday, I would not have known. But today, this evening, I can tell you, 42 take courses in our school division, six at the elementary school level, and 36 at the middle school and high- school level, and thirty-six at the middle school and high school level.
Terms, you're taking public schools?
We have six hundred ninety-six home instructed students, last year's count. That was up by about forty from the year before.
Six ninety-six.
And we're off to a booming start this year. I would suspect we'll have around seven hundred again. Maybe that will inch up a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Nelson on that particular item? Item sixteen point oh three, approved proposed amendments to policy twenty-two oh two suicide risk. Any of, any questions? Sixteen point oh four, received for information superintendent's proposed new regulation twenty-two oh two R suicide Risk. Any questions for Ms. Clark?
Yeah, I just.
Yes.
So, what's happening is we're counting down the policy, or not counting down, that's not a good word. We're adjusting the policy to read strictly as a policy, and then we're moving everything else to regulation?
To the red.
Is that what's going on?
That's what it looks like.
That's right. It, it was, it was a little inappropriate to have so much detail all under the policy.
All under the policy.
So, we just moved it to a regulation.
Okay, just so I understand. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Item sixteen point oh five, approved proposed amendments to policy twenty-five oh one guidance and counseling programs. Any questions for Dr. Clark?
I did have one. I'm sorry.
You're full of questions today, Ms. Kidby.
I'm just full of questions. So, do we currently not offer employment counseling to, I'm going to assume, our high school students? Or are we just no longer, according to this policy, going to offer it?
We continue to offer both career and employment counseling, job search, job coaching, employment. The language changed per the Virginia code. So, we just really got rid of old language, removed it just to keep, if you look at the date of the code, actually, it's still very dated. Removal of that doesn't mean that we're not doing it. It just, it's addressed through career counseling and guidance. If you look at the second bullet, actually, career guidance, which helps students to acquire information on planned action about work, jobs, apprenticeships, et cetera.
Okay, I see that. I see that. Okay, thank you very much.
Item sixteen point oh six, approve the award of contracts to license advertising rights for scoreboards, score tables, and other equipment at athletic venues at the middle and high school to Sports Image of Midlothian, Virginia. Any questions for Mr. Haran or his designee?
And I don't need this answer tonight. You can get it to me later on. I just want to make sure that this is not exclusive, because I know a lot of our fields have banners up, you know, they put up for sponsors and, you know, the different athletic boosters raise money different ways. So, I don't want to preclude the, the schools from putting up banners from supporters that may not go through this.
No, ma'am. This is just an avenue to get the scoreboards paid for.
Okay.
Through advertising.
Thank you.
I have a question.
What? Mrs. Reinbold.
Sorry.
Mrs. Reinbold, please go first.
I'm sorry. Does this mean that we're going to have advertisements on scoreboards, which is what's helping to pay for them?
Yes.
And do we know who these advertisers will be, or will it be the company?
We will have a say in whether or not to accept or reject these, these advertisers, yes.
Okay, so we'll become.
But the Sports Image Company, they go out and they sell the ad, excuse me, the advertisements for the scoreboards and, and essentially pay for the scoreboard. And we, we sign a three-year deal with them. They get the revenues for three years. After three years, we get seventy percent of the revenue, and they get thirty percent.
That is contained within the item?
Yes.
But there won't be anything that's going to cause a problem for the booster clubs? Because I know there have been problems before because of our contracts with soda companies. And our boosters have been told you have to buy from the vendors, which costs them two or three times as much, they might as well not, you know.
No, that's.
Not even be able to sell soda.
It's exclusively for the school boards. There'd be no underlying.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
I noticed in the document, there's a four-year rollout. For example, year one, three high schools get it in the gym. Three high schools get it baseball. Two middle schools get in the gym. How are we going to determine who gets it and when?
Actually, that, we put that in there for information purposes. That was a layout that we determined. But the administr, the administrators, the athletic directors are putting together a list for us in priority.
Okay.
And we're going to prioritize which needs are met.
So, our building administrators are going to be involved in this priority? Okay, that's all I need to know. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Sixteen oh eight, approve the, wow, I'm jumping. Sixteen oh seven, approve the update to the Stafford County Public School Indoor Air Quality Management Plan. Questions? Sixteen oh eight, approve a final resolution declaring eight point five-five acres known as tax map and land parcels twenty-one dash sixty-five F, part of the Antimonture Elementary School campus surplus, and use the proceeds to accrue to a capital improvement fund established for the new school construction, school renovation, and major school maintenance projects. Any questions? Item sixteen point oh nine, approve a resolution declaring point oh four-eight acres located on tax map land parcel twenty-one thirty-six A, part of the Antimonture Elementary School Campus surplus, and use the proceeds to accrue in a capital improvement fund established for new school construction, school renovation, and major school maintenance projects. Questions? Item sixteen point one zero, approve additional two point, uh, two FTEs. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Madam Chairman, would it be possible to move this to action so that these positions could actually be advertised before the next meeting?
I would welcome it.
Then I'll make a motion to move this to action.
Second, item to be moved to, to action, motion and, and second. Any discussion?
Just that I, I'm grateful that, to see that there are some additional resources going to Hampton Oaks, and hope that we will continue to, to look at staffing at that particular school.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? What, do we do that at the end then?
No, we can, or do it right now?
I think we could do it now. And I'd like to defer to Mrs. Kidby for the action on this. We just moved it to action, so now we need a motion to approve it.
Yes.
I'd like to move for approval of item sixteen point one zero.
A second, please.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item sixteen point one one, approve revision to regulation forty-six oh four, part-time, temporary, and substitute employment. Any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, go ahead.
I'm just, all the questions here. I just, I, I just want to, there's not going to be any, where is he? There's not going to be any change to our substitute pay, is there? I, I, as I was reading through that, I was trying to go get my head around that.
We're just bringing it, bringing the regulation in alignment with our actual practice.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
That was my question.
Thanks.
Item sixteen point one two, and this one has been requested by staff to move to action. Amendment to the agenda, approve and authorize a tax exempt lease purchase agreement between the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Stafford and the City of Stoughton, Virginia, and the Stafford County School Board in the principal amount of three-hundred-thousand five hundred to finance the acquisition and installation of three heavy-duty in-ground axle-engaging lifts. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am. I was going to make the motion to move it to action. Thank you. So may.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The only comment that I have is, I think we're missing the other, it only has page one of one now. Before, it said page one of eighteen. And it seemed like the rest of the lease document wasn't there.
Which one are we looking at?
Well, earlier today, it's the, the actual leasing document that's signed by the Industrial Development Authority.
It's a attachment to tax exempt lease purchase agreement.
Right, it says one of one, but if you look, it says sixty-four kilobytes, and that's, and earlier it did say page one of eighteen. And I was wondering if all the other pages weren't included. Do you know what I'm saying, Dr. Bridges?
Maybe what we're seeing is.
You're saying that there's.
I don't think you have the exhibits. It, it looks like that.
It's just the signature.
It's the actual agreement, yeah. It says it's in Exhibit C, has the details, the lease terms, and I'm sure that's the other seventeen pages.
And that's the part that's not there, yeah.
Right.
Right. But basically, the, the, the lease purchase, yeah, the lease purchase agreement. Well, and the agreement's intact. I did the math to make sure that the numbers were actually calculating at the interest rate that it indicated. It all came out fine. It's just that if there are other documents, we would need to at least see those at an additional time.
Is anyone from Fleet Services here? I, I did have a, a question about, about this. If I'm, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know that these lifts, for Fleet Services, are, are used by the county, as well as by the school system. And I know that we, we charge the county for services. However, I was wondering if there was any discussion in, in this process of this lease of allowing our county to help pay for some of the lifts?
There wasn't at the time. We, at the time, it was kind of an emergency situation because the lifts were a safety issue.
A safety issue.
So, through a combination of the fund balance in Fleet Services and this three-hundred-thousand dollars leased agreement, we presented that to the board supervisors. They appropriated dollars. The lifts are in. We're just to the point now where they have to be paid for. And in conversations with Pat Lacy, there was some additional, this motion, this resolution was needed for his law firm to write an opinion on the lease. So, that's where this came from.
Okay. So, this is coming out of our capital? It's coming out of the school's capital, not the, not the, the county?
Yes, ours.
Okay. All right. Perhaps at a later time, there could be some communication or opportunity for open communication with the, with the county about a shared expense for, for this lease, perhaps?
Sure.
Sure. Madam Chairman, a question. Wouldn't that naturally come up when we compute the cost and the share, the cost-sharing arrangement? Since this is going to be a lease purchase, those lease payments are part of the cost, and I would expect that the county would contribute their share based on whatever formula we have that determines on an annual basis what their contribution is.
You would think so.
Yeah, in that regard, the dollars that are generated by Fleet Services are paid in from school division, service department, and the county. So, it's all in there, in that regard.
We'll just have to up our rate to the.
There's a motion to move this to action. Discussion has ensued. Anyone, all those in favor, please.
Yes.
You second?
Yes.
Has been seconded. All those in favor of moving sixteen point one two to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is now an action item. Can I have a motion to approve sixteen point one two as action?
Motion to approve sixteen point one two.
Thank you for the second, Ms. Palmke. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have a staff report at this time. It is the two-thousand-eleven annual energy conservation report. Yes, sir.
Long night, huh?
Oh.
night for you folks. My bride and I went up to Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to a theater called the Millennium Theater. Have anybody been there? And we saw a movie about, or a play by the name of Jonah, which reminded me of an email that I received called Don't Mess With Little Girls. And it was about an eight-year-old who was in a science class, and they were studying whale and everything like that. And the little girl, her name was Susie, she raised her hand, and she says, "Do whales eat people?" Teacher says, "No. Whales don't eat people." Susie raised her hand again. She says, "Well, what about Jonah?" Teacher says, "Whale did not eat Jonah." Susie raised her hand again. She says, "Is Jonah lying?" Teacher says, "Well, could be, because whales don't eat people." She says, "When I go to heaven, I'm going to ask Jonah if he was lying." And the teacher says, "What happens if Jonah isn't in heaven?" Little girl says, "Well, you ask him." You don't mess with little girls. Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the school board, Dr. Bridges, this is our annual report on how we've done. Our overview we're going to look at tonight is energy reduction efforts, energy performance contract update, and new and future reduction efforts. For the sixth consecutive year, the school division has reduced energy cost, even though our cost went up eleven percent.
Wow.
From point oh seven-nine, which is an all-time low, to a point eighty-eight, which is still a very good rate for kilowatts of electricity. How did we do it? Energy performance contract. We just finished one with, with temperature controls and retrocommissioning of facilities. Now, if, if you received a copy of this, I hope you went over it and looked at the figures and looked at the figures very well. In two thousand and five, the left column is BTUs, thousand of BTUs per square foot. And you see, we're like two-hundred-and-forty-eight million. Well, in two thousand and eleven, in that top column, we're down to a hundred-and-fifty-eight million BTUs of energy consumed by the schools in the county. Now, in two thousand and seven, we started adding schools. We added Mountain View, Conway, Anthony Burns, Dixon Smith, and Shirley Heims in that period of time. And if you take the last number down on two-thousand-and-eleven, the one ninety-six million, and see how far it is below the two forty-eight, we're running five schools free. And if you look at just the top numbers, we saved roughly two-point-two million dollars, just in energy costs.
Yes. That's because we turned off the lights.
Very good.
And the heat.
So, you, you, you saw that on the first slide, too.
No, I remember last year, I answered the question correctly.
Okay. We also saved about a hundred and twenty-five tons of CO2 going into the atmosphere by doing this. And this is the right thing for us to do. There's, there is another significant slide, that in two thousand and five, our cost was about two dollars and four cents a square foot to operate the schools. And last year, even with the increase in the cost of utilities, we're still at a dollar twenty-seven.
Yes.
Which is very, very good. Performance contract. We just finished a performance contract that consists of lighting, occupancy centers, motors, frequency drives, and water conservation. We utilize a state contract, evaluate and select a performance contract. We went with Naresco. And the contract is funded out of. And the contract is funded out of energy savings, it does not cost the taxpayers any money. I don't come to you ever and ask you for money, I come to you and say, here we come, there's money coming back. Phase one, we did eighteen schools. In phase two, we did eight schools, we upgraded eight schools, and we were completed in May of this year. And it was funded by a bond fund that Mr. Haran arranged for. The schools we worked on in phase two, Hampton Oaks, Park Ridge, Whiting Creek, Drew, AG Wright, Brook Point, Mountain View, and PDC. I hope you're just writing your questions down, we'll get to them in a minute. The update number two were the four ECMs that we did. The lighting in Drew Middle School, we put all-new lights, occupancy sensors in Drew in several schools, water conservation in Drew, it was left out of the first group that we did totally. And the variable frequency drives, we did in several schools. The annual cost to do this is going to be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and that's what our guarantee is. Our audit was completed in two thousand and ten. You approved the contract in January of two thousand and eleven, we started work in June, and we finished it in May of two thousand and twelve. All complete. We're going to continue to implement energy management plan that was adopted by the board, and we're going to do a roadmap to comprehensive energy management. Retrocommissioning efforts, we're doing Drew Middle School and Park Ridge this year, and we should do Widewater next year. And the commissioning, if you're not familiar with it, we go into the schools and we try to bring them mechanically back up to when they were originally installed. And we continue to fine-tune the controls and upgrade. We have a nuts-and-bolts approach to energy management. I feel that if everything is working properly, it works efficiently. Been working with planning and construction on the high school and some renovations. We're starting to look at different things for maybe possibly a phase three for the performance contract. It's a very good vehicle to get things done, and it does not cost us anything. And we're hoping to get a wind turbine put in at Rodney Thompson Middle School. And you get a hundred percent energy savings when?
Turn off the lights.
You turn off the lights. Do we have any questions?
That wind turbine, or the wind generation, will that put energy, will the school then use that energy? Will it go back to the grid?
It'll be utilized in the school. It's going to be a very small generator, it's going to be used for educational purposes mostly. It's not big enough to run a school or anything like that.
No.
How much will the turbine, wind turbine cost?
We're trying to do it through grants. Right now, they've received a grant for ten thousand dollars, we need about twenty-five. So the lady that's in charge of that at Rodney Thompson is looking for more grant money to see if we can do that.
Does anyone ask the community how they feel about having a wind turbine?
I can't hear.
Has anyone asked the community how they feel about having a wind turbine?
I can't answer that.
There is a very large Virginia power easement that goes through that school already. So I don't know that it would be any worse than what's already there. And actually, I think Thompson really does a lot with the outdoors and their science classes, and they have a lot of opportunities there. So I would see this really as a learning opportunity for the students, more so than a, you know, energy generating, I mean, that's almost like a bonus.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Mrs. Palmke?
Obviously, we've had the lights off and the circulation off in this room for a little while. What brings the mold smell in here when we walked in the front door this morning, or this evening?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that one. I know there's people that are looking into it.
There's the man with the answer.
Actually, we have, through Scott Haran, we have a project, I'm not sure if it's at operating or CIP, that the system's antiquated, so there's some upgrades that need to take place to help that.
And when are those upgrades projected in the CIP?
I can't answer that, I would really have to consult with him on it.
Always concerned about that air quality that's in here. Not just us, but everybody sitting in the audience, so.
Absolutely.
If you could follow up with Mr. Haran on that, that would be great when he returns.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Kosker, you had a question?
Yeah, it was kind of along those lines. Ms. Reinbold brought up, you did bring up a good point, though, because you still have, I believe, there may be some traps we need to run on the height of the turbine and then the bird conservation effort. There's just a few things that go along. Yeah, so I'm sure that you all are moving towards that, but I would like to get kept informed of that. The winter, I know when I visit the schools in the wintertime, especially during winter break, the ten-month employees are freezing. Now, you guys are at the, you know, I know, you understand, I understand where you guys are at, you're at the switch level back in the buildings, but the, you know, the professionals are up there working, you know, through the ten-month, you know, over the, over the winter break and holidays, and they are freezing. And of course, we don't have, we're not allowed any space heaters, so when I go, when they go in, they're all bundled up and.
We mean the twelve-month employees.
Twelve-month employees. Twelve-month employees. They're all bundled up, and so are we, has there been, I guess there'd be more, Mrs. Kale, and have you heard a lot of complaints about that? About the twelve-month employees just freezing their tails off? And is there something we can do about it?
Twelve months usually are in the, if I'm correct.
In the summer.
They were in the areas that are heated.
They'd be in the admin, and hopefully the admin is heated. Hopefully the admin, okay.
Buildings are zoned here.
Yeah, if the buildings are zoned, that's exactly right.
Absolutely. We coordinate with staff for custodial operations and any staff that's working in the building.
And then also, you know, it'd be probably more the supervision level, not so much you all with the switch, but, you know, making sure that the students aren't freezing when they come back off of holidays and breaks, you know. If it takes two days to heat the school up and the kids are, you know, shaking in a classroom, which I have seen, and that's not good, so. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask Dr. Bridges to compliment Mr. Haran on his staff's support tonight. In his absence, there, he was very well represented.
Item eighteen point oh one, next meeting is the school board retreat on August fifth, ten a.m. at the Stafford Hospital Center, and then a regular meeting on August twenty-eighth. And with that, we are adjourned.